It's Monday, February 10th. I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray.
You gotta press the green button.
Present. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathma.
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss is absent. Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So, the first RL 2534 is in the Committee of Public Municipal and Public Affairs. I will hand it over to Chair, remember, or Chair, which is Councilmember Middleton, and Alan Gardner is the Fire Chief, who's gonna be the presenter. Please come on down, Alan.
Welcome.
How are y'all doing today?
Good. So, this is RL 25-34, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a safer grant from the Department of Homeland Security. Can you just talk about that?
Sure. This is a, obviously, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a safer grant, which, from the Department of Homeland Security, for the amount of $1,836,624 for fire department staffing. So, it's, basically, it's gonna be for eight firefighters that will, that their salaries and benefits will be fully funded for three years. FEMA typically, the city usually pays a 10% fee. FEMA, they've waived that. And so, anyway, we're planning on hiring the April, April 1st. And the March, the grant begins in March 22nd, and it's for years 2025, '26, and '27. And so, it's very beneficial to us, you know, we, we'll see a reduction OT, you know, we increase the staffing. You know, we can man the apparatus with more personnel, and we just have increased operational efficiency. And all around, it's a, it's a very good program, and I think the last one we got was about 10 years ago.
And how, and you said it's only for three years?
Three years.
So then what happens to the employees after?
Well, I believe in the last safer grant 10 years ago, we have people retiring every year, so we would hopefully backfill through attrition.
And then they would be added on to the budget?
Well, they wouldn't be added. Hopefully, hopefully, people would retire, and they'll just replace those existing positions. Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Chief. Are you worried with federal funding being up in the air right now that we won't be reimbursed for this grant, and we'll end up having to pay this out of pocket?
Um, I haven't heard anything about that, but...
Mr. President.
I haven't heard anything that would cause a concern.
These are fiscal year, federal fiscal 2023 funds, so it's all...
Good.
God, if they were going back that far, it would be, yeah.
Well, let's hope not. Anybody else have any questions?
Um, sorry, I don't have my copy of the budget right now. Is this already in our, the approved budget for this year, or is this something that's going to increase the budget in the department?
It will, it'll increase the budget. It will be, the money will be backfilled. So, how the comptroller, mechanic's have it exactly. I'm not sure how he's gonna do it, but it said there's, there's no actual increase to our budget.
Because of, because of the grant.
I, I was just, we budgeted for these eight firefighters, and now we have a different source paying for them. I wasn't sure if this was already included in the budget, or now we have over a million dollars that could be spent in a different spot.
Yeah, the comptroller, actually, part of the packet, he kinda mapped out the, the budgetary process.
Yeah, I don't have a budget transfer sheet in my packet.
Was one provided to the clerk's office?
Everything that was provided to us is included as supplemental materials.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman.
Absolutely.
I'm so out of breath from the stairs, so... So, this is add, I think the chief said this, but this is adding eight new firefighters. So, we will probably, I'd imagine we'd come back to council with a budget amendment, but this is just a RL to accept the grant funding. So, if anything needs to be changed in the 2025 budget, I'd imagine the comptroller would bring that back down with separate legislation.
So, does that need to be, does that need to be changed first before we accept this, or?
No, this can be accepted as is. It would be two separate RLs anyway, and we can just clarify with the, with Chuck and the Finance Department on whether a second one is needed to amend the budget.
Does any other member have any other questions? Councilmember Matavetsky.
Well, just if the budget transfer sheet exists, it would be nice if that was sent out to council.
One does not exist, so if we need one, I will ensure that it's sent down for the next work session. But if it's not in your packet, one wasn't created yet.
Can I ask what the chief then just had in his hand? Cause he just showed a budget transfer.
Okay, it looks like it's in there, then.
We take a moment and have the deputy clerk make a copy of that for all of us.
Uh, do you want me to see this? Was this just the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. This was not in your packet? Okay, I'd rather just let, let finance send one down, then. I'm not sure if this is what will, what will finally be submitted or not.
Okay, it just seems odd to me that there was one provided for the chief, and then we didn't get provided one, and now it might not even be the right numbers. So, but all right, we can wait till finance.
President, I just don't, I would rather check, check with Chuck on what, what this is, and whether it's the right one before we, before we ask for council approval on it.
I mean, I would also like to confirm with the comptroller, but this appears to be...
Excuse me?
Approximate math, what would, what would be the fiscal 2025 amount coming in out of this grant? Coming in as a revenue increase under federal aid, and then the appropriate amounts divvied out into the salary line, and then the benefits lines. So, appears to be approximately correct. We should confer with the comptroller, make sure. Yeah.
Any other members of council have any further questions? Hearing none. Chief, thank you so much for presenting. Megan, I'll follow up with you and Chuck to get that budget transfer sheet.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Chief, was it, is there somebody specific that worked on this, on this grant?
It's staff and fire administration, the primary...
Captain Griswold, it looks like.
Captain Arthur Griswold.
Well, thank him for it, of course.
He did a great job.
Thank you so much, Chief. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item on the agenda is in the Employees Committee. As ex officio, a member of the Employees Committee, I'll be presenting, or I'll be at the chair, and Police Chief Joseph Kuski, please come down to present. This is RL 2535. It's an ordinance to amend Charter Chapter 124-39, Personal Policies for Change in Title of Discovery Officer. Chief, can you give us a little background, please?
Let me know.
Yep.
There we go, greens ago. This is discovery money through the governor. Everybody knows a change in the discovery laws. So, went to the District Attorney's Office to allot it to local police agencies. Obviously, we have the largest volume. So, when we spoke to civil service, that position was gonna be an administrative assistant. And so, we could separate that in the budget, know what that job was. I put in parentheses, discovery. Somewhere, somehow with the original RL, it got put in as a discovery officer. There's, there's no such position. So, all we wanna do is go back and change, we went in the charter as a discovery officer, and go back in the charter as administrative assistant, doing discovery work. It was a mistaken wording. So, we know in the budget what that job was.
Any council members have any questions? Councilmember Rathma.
Chief, for members and those watching, can you explain the function of a discovery officer within the department?
Again, it's not a discovery officer. Every single piece of anything that goes, when a person's arrested for criminal charges, gotta be provided to the defense. Any officer's notes, any video, any body camera, every report, everything there is, it's a, every video, it's a, it's a full-time job, especially the volume of work we do. So, as you may have seen recently, there's moves to try to change that law a little bit. You have to, anything to do with it. So, this person's gotta hunt down, make sure every note, any officer took, every report, if there's street video, if there's body camera, they gather all that stuff, put it together in a case file, in a computer program that the district attorney set up, and that can shift over to them, which ultimately ends up to the defense attorney.
And so, you represented that the discovery officer position was not originally intended. So, is there currently a full-time person functioning as the discovery officer?
There's a, the title is, it's a secretarial position that's performing the function right now. You know, trying to do it among her other duties.
So, it's not currently a full-time position? It's someone who's...
Most of her time, we're trying, we're sort of pulling, that's why the district attorney and the governor realized how time-consuming this was on police agencies. So, she's got other duties as a, as a regular job, so everybody's sort of pulling in, trying to do this, you know, pull, pull this stuff together.
Currently handled as out-of-title pay, or?
She's not getting any extra money.
Has the department received any complaints about current discovery practices, whether it's timely response?
That's right now. Those complaints will go to the district attorney through the, through the court, if there was a trial, or motions by the defense, if they didn't get something, or there's nothing been brought to my attention.
Within, I think just one more at this point. The overall grant is about $82,000. The position as it's identified, if I'm understanding what was submitted correctly, is about 45, just over $45,000. Is there a plan for the remaining $36.7K?
That's fringe in benefits. And there's already a grant for the following year, for next year. They expect this to go on forever, but you never know. Just like we get a lot of grants, the give grant's been going on eight years, but we've already had funding for this, the next year coming up.
And you have administrative oversight?
Excuse me?
You have administrative oversight?
I do.
I was curious about, in terms of coming up with titles and how that might appeal towards recruiting. So, it sounds like you're still actively hiring for this position, even?
Well, we're getting permission from, from you guys to have it, so then we'd have to post it. And quite frankly, we probably thought with the person who's doing that job now, backfill her job at a lower pay, which she's making, try to hire for that position, because she's, she's pretty good at it.
So, so some, an administrative assistant title position is something that you, you feel that that title does well in terms of recruiting people?
Yes, you know, we looked at it with civil service, what the function was, what they're doing, basically fell in line with, you know, the definition at civil service for administrative assistant.
Okay. I just, discovery officer sounds really cool.
I know.
I was like, if I were, if I were looking between two jobs, and one was discovery officer, and the other was administrative assistant dash discovery, I would apply for the first one. I probably wouldn't apply for the second one.
Chief, with you mentioning the civil service, do they, are they gonna be covered under the PB, or the CBA for the PBA, or the CBA for CSEA?
Management-tested.
Management-tested, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Sorry, just making sure I heard you right. The district attorney has agreed already to fund this next year as well?
Correct.
And, um... These were coming out of their diversion funds, right, or something? Do you remember?
This is funds directly from the governor's office for discovery.
Okay.
Not for diversion funds. This specifically, the money that he has, has to go for the discovery.
Okay.
Anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none.
As long as I'm here, if I may. I was at a meeting last, I was at another meeting last week, or your last work session, and Captain Bidwell presented about a grant for two vehicles. I understand there might have been some questions he couldn't answer. I'll answer those if you...
We asked specifically, at least one of the questions that we asked specifically, was the total number in the current fleet?
It's probably roughly around 75. I'd have to get you the exact number.
And I, I had one too about that. How often do you change the cars? Cause I know that you guys came at the end of the year, like, asking for three new cars. I just wanted to know, like, the mechanism of that.
Apparently, there was, at the end of the year, there was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
Those were unmarked vehicles. I, I understand, you gave us one out of the three. Those were for the Special Investigations Unit.
Okay.
Cars they were driving are 12 and 13 years old, that go over 130,000 miles on. They needed to be replaced.
Okay.
Though, we, we've, unmarked cars last, obviously, a lot longer than marked cars. So, we try to rotate marked cars out every three years.
Okay.
So, currently, it's not in the budget, because with our manpower shortage and filling those positions, we usually, I have trouble recruiting, filling those positions. So, when it comes towards the end of the year, money left in that line, in the personnel line, like we did it this past summer, come to you guys and ask you to move the money over to the vehicle line, and you, you know, you only moved one. So, that would be the plan for this year.
Only because we didn't have enough information. That's why, that's why, that's why.
Presented as...
Yeah, yeah, it was, when it was presented to us, it was just like, hey, we need these cars, and we're like, okay, like, what? Like, we wanted some more information on it. We didn't get any.
Somebody should have asked, but, you know, an email, but...
We did.
We did.
We did.
I didn't get any emails. But anyway, we replaced the cars. Every manufacturer will tell you the three majors manufacturers, that a police patrol vehicle is three times the mileage what it is. So, if it has 100,000 miles on it, it's 300,000. We have a very good mechanic that keeps them in good running state. Right now, the fleet's the best. It's getting, you know, between Mayor David and Merritt Cram, recent, when he first took office, the fleet's in pretty good shape as you looked at it. But now that's starting to age. Those cars that were new a year or two ago are now two, they're starting to become two and three years old. So, they, you know, we try to get the permanent, it's called permanent cars, extra cars that aren't, you know, cars that go out every single ship. We try to replace those every three years.
Chief, just to go back for a second, I know you said nobody sent you an email, but we can't ask questions. We don't even know what we're supposed to ask, so...
I was just told...
No, no, yeah.
Somehow you guys were told that if you had any questions, you reach out to me. So, I figured you didn't have any.
Well, next time, when that comes down, can you at least like, give us some more background information? I mean, sometimes we get a packet with a day or two to look at it, and you're trying to do the best you can on a day or two to do your due diligence.
It's just miscommunication. Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know if there was any on this current grant. It's fully federal-funded, no match. And it's gotta be specialized vehicles. We found out, actually, from another agency that the money was available. Took us like six months to apply, to put out, put in for us. We applied for this sometime last year.
And if I remember right, it was a van, transport van was one of the...
The other was like an equipment van to move certain, you know, anything we need to move, like fence and light, lighting and generators. But it had to be a specialized vehicle, couldn't be patrol cars.
So, okay, all right. Cause that was, some of, some of the context was like, on your list of priorities for vehicles, have, have they been met? It sounds like no, because the two that...
Now, we're in good shape now. I might be back here in December, and probably will be, and say, we have X amount of hours left in the personnel line. Can we please transfer it into the vehicle line? Cause we're gonna need cars. And we did that the last few years, if you look back. You know, we've been buying cars in late November, early December, with money left over, so not to, to keep the tax rate down, not to inflate the budget, you know, put these cars in, and have all this money left at the end of the year in the personnel line. So, you know, we have 24 openings right now. The Ajudi test is this Saturday, and we start out with 90 candidates. We're down to 44. So, are we gonna fill those 24 openings? Probably not. Probably not. So, I'll be back here late in the year saying, can we move that money to buy patrol vehicles? This grant had to be a specialized vehicle, couldn't be for patrol vehicles. The one you're voting on Wednesday.
So, can I ask you another question? This kind of, so, I know that you, I know that you guys asked, like, for the overtime, like, at the end of the year? It's always like, usually, you're over, like, budget with overtime. Go ahead.
Last year is the first year ever I went over my overtime budget.
Okay.
You're talking about another department of the city.
Oh, no, I, well, I, I was talking, talking about you.
That was so funny. You got it.
No, 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 no. I was talking, no, I was talking about, I was talking about last year.
Last year was the first year that we've ever gone over, my overtime budget.
So, if that happens this year, instead of getting a car, why would you use the money from the personnel line for overtime?
Wherever we could put it together.
To me, that seems like, cause that, to me, that seems like better spending than using it on cars. Like, if there's, if there's extra money...
Obviously, we'd have to backfill where the money we already spent. So, yes, we would go to overtime first. We couldn't say, okay, we're gonna leave this hanging out there and buy cars. If there's excess money left over in the budget, obviously, we'd have to meet that need that, where we, where I went over the budget. And, and how I come up with that overtime figure is like an average of the last five years, and it depends on how many homicides we have, how many parades, you know, you know, it's, it fluctuates, so you can't come up with a steadfast number, how many court trials. So, no, but if your question is, yes, we'd have to pay the overtime, put the money in that line before we bought cars, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And I was just saying, like, it'd probably be better, cause I think last year, that was kind of like a...
Yeah. Can, can I direct the question over to Councilman Kavanaugh about that? Could you just clarify about the, how the money was being moved around? Oh, sorry.
What do you want clarified? Sorry.
The money. Cause we're discussing the overtime. It seemed like there was one thing to move money into police overtime, and then the police overtime money was being spent, wanted to be spent on the cars.
Yeah.
And it seemed like a complicated financial transfer.
I don't think we're trying to, we use police overtime for cars.
No, no, no.
You use the personnel.
Personnel.
Money was filled, I will look back now. We can look back. But the, at the time, my memory of the time was, yes, we, we had one week, we had money being moved into overtime. And then, another week, then we were using personnel money to pay for cars. That should have been backfilled into overtime first.
Yeah.
So, but I will double check.
From looking at the finances, it seems to be done in an odd order.
Not my department. You know, I don't know how they did it.
But that was part of the... Not being willing to just fund three cars at that time.
Yeah. And I think that was, that was one of our decisions on why we didn't, we didn't fund the three cars. We were just kind of, you know, wondering why, like, how the mechanism works. Like, you know, we're all first, first year, well, in our second year now. So, we were trying to figure out what the mechanism was behind that and how it worked.
I mean, the strongest thing was just that no case was made for the two additional cars.
Definitely not.
Car, there was a case made for one car, but not made for three.
Understood.
Chief, thank you so much for coming down and presenting. You have a good evening.
I'll stick around for Captain Henderson, in case you got any questions with what he...
Thank you.
Next on the, on the agenda is in the Employees Committee. I will be the chair as the ex officio member. Presenter is Larry Hendrickson, who's the president of the Binghamton PBA. Come on down, Larry. This is RL 25-43. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an MOU with the Binghamton PBA. Larry, please give a little background.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Captain.
So, in the 2025 budget, as you know, we're budgeted for 145 officers. We currently have 121 officers in the department. As the chief mentioned, that leaves us down 24 officers. We're gonna lose a couple more here coming up with some retirements that are about to happen, so that number's actually gonna be higher than, than what he said. One of the things that, as a PBA, that we're looking at is to help with retention. I know that that's very important to many of our councilmen and women here, that you guys have discussed that previously. So, what, what I've done is, this RL in question here, it's a proposed change, is a memorandum of agreement to our collective bargaining agreement that we currently have, which will, is due to expire December 31st of 2026. It's, everything that's in this MOA is geared towards retention of our officers. We've lost a number of officers from the department, both through retirement, and also officers going to other departments. So, the three things that are contained in here, there's, there's three basic changes. You guys all got a copy of the MOA that I made. I'll go over each one of those three things with a little more explanation on it, cause I know some of it might be a little foreign as to how we do certain things, like, for example, compensatory time and stuff like that. So, that first change in the MOA there is in regards to the compensatory time. How compensatory time is set up in our CBA right now is an officer can accrue up to 80 hours of comp time. It was originally set at that, so that if an officer had, for example, 400 hours of compensatory time built up, when they leave service, either through transfer to another agency or through retirement, they get paid out for whatever they have. So, if you had an exorbitant amount of money, or comp time, rather, it would be an exorbitant amount of money with a huge payoff. So, 80 was where it was set, and no officer could ever accrue more than 80 hours. Uh, and no officer could ever accrue more than eighty hours of comp time. What this change does is it keeps it at the most that you can cash in is still eighty hours. That does not change. It will not cost the city any more money. However, officers can accrue up to a hundred and sixty hours of comp time, uh, instead of eighty. Uh, you could accrue comp time through, uh, working extra, uh, same as overtime. A lot of times officer will have a choice between whether they get comp time or whether they get overtime. Uh, this actually will potentially, in all, in all likelihood, will save the city money. Because right now, when an officer has eighty hours of comp time and he has to work extra, he has no choice but to pick the overtime because he's, eighty is his max. All right. This way he can now choose the more comp time. What comp time does for the officers, again, uh, particularly our younger officers, we don't wanna, uh, lose when they get a few years on the job, is these younger officers, they haven't maxed out on their, uh, vacation time yet. So because of that, they get very little vacation time. So they can utilize this comp time to supplement them, to give them more time off. Uh, also compensatory time is all, uh, like all of our discretionary leave time, like PLs and holidays. Uh, it's manpower permitting. So it's not gonna tax us and put us into, in, into a manpower situation. It's only when we have the officer to, that's working that day enough for them to take it. Uh, another thing that's really good about this is our younger officers, uh, tend to be the ones who are having children. All right. And so they want FMLA. Well, they haven't accrued very much sick time yet in their first couple of years on the job. So they can't take sick time and use too much of it. So it forces them to come back uh, to work or to choose to take zeros and not be paid. Uh, so this gives more flexibility for them as well. Uh, any questions on, on the comp time portion before I go on to the second and third ones?
Some bigger picture questions. Uh, I don't know if it would be better at the end or now.
Of the overall?
Yeah, just like, uh, for example, uh, how this proposal at all, like how it matches up with the exit interviews of the people that are departing prematurely, uh, and, and how, like how this directly addresses that? If there's any data on the exit interviews that can be shared with council, um, so that we can understand the retainment issues, uh, more, there's enough people departing that there's gotta be some sort of patterns in the data.
I'm, that's a great question, uh, but I don't know. So I've never been in an exit interview and I've never been shared with what's within the exit interviews. Uh, that's usually done by personnel.
Here, so I'll, I'll direct it towards the chief.
Some people decline, uh, an exit interview. Um, these issues, um, haven't necessarily come up. Recently it's been, I wanna work where I grew up. Some people, like three, four guys went to the sheriff's office. I grew up in Schenandoah Bridge. I wanna work there. I wanna work there. Some, uh, um, quite frankly, don't wanna do the work we do that the Binghamton Police Department does. We deal with the worst of the worst in the Broome County. And some of them said, I'm going to, I won't name any other municipalities where they don't deal with this kind of stuff. And, and a few of, of, have said that. We don't wanna do that kind of work. So, um, that, that's been the more recent ones is that we don't wanna do this kind of work that a police officer has to do in the city of Binghamton or there was two or three recently said, I wanna go to work because I grew up in Schenandoah Bridge, work where I grew up.
I think to echo the, the question that was asked, is there data in writing that we would be able to receive and review to help us understand the retention issue as it stands?
No.
It doesn't exist?
Question is, why not?
It doesn't exist.
As, as if we all understand that retention is a desperate need in the city. Why is there not an organized, structured investigation into how we can fix our retention problem?
Every department in, in this country sits, uh, has the same problem we have. What data are you gonna collect? These guys are coming and say, I wanna go work where I wanna, I wanna work where I live? Or I don't wanna do this.
Yes, that can be tallied. You can have.
Well, we don't have that big of a turnover that, you know, it's four or five a year, or sometimes it's less than that.
There's, there's empty spots. So there's like a, we're not filled. And I, I know that it is a countrywide issue. So, you know, I, I understand that. But what we're trying to figure out is how we can make sure that, you know, we don't have empty lines. Again, back to personnel, like it's filled to the capacity. So that way we're servicing the people of Binghamton. So that's kind of what we want, that's what we wanna do with the data to make sure that it's like that, you know, people, you know, the complaints that we get from people, especially in my district, there isn't enough cops for traffic. So, and we know that, um, you know, it's spread thin. There's not that many. We, we're trying to figure out how we can help with the retention problem. It's not, um, it's not to say like what's, you know, we don't wanna dive deep into it, but we wanna figure out how we can help with retention.
I would be interested in diving deep. Um, just to be clear, and I think again, just, and I don't know that I need to restate the question, but does that data exist in writing to be shared?
Oh, yeah.
Or it does not exist?
Okay.
And quite frankly, I appreciate your, your ability to try to help us. It's, some of this is out of your control. We used to have five, six, seven, eight hundred people take the test. We had ninety. This is nothing, anything you can control. We had more people than the county for the first time that, that there's a countywide test outside of ours. We had more people than them. You can't control that. You know, I can't control that if they don't take the test. So we just can't fill the numbers when, you know, there used to be two classrooms filled up at the high school with hundreds of people taking. This last time we had ninety people take the test. So there's nothing me, you, this council can do to get these people.
I don't think it's unfair. I don't think it's unfair, however, to point out, and I would just also represent that there have been several thousands of dollars, whether it's ARPA or through under, other funding resources that have been committed toward retention within the department. And if we don't have an actual data-driven strategy when it comes to retention, and this is just being requested without something to reveal, I don't, I mean, that's what we're asking for.
I, I wanna chime in. I know when I talked to, uh, Captain Hendrickson about this, uh, it was what he's talked to and got word of mouth from some of the younger officers. I mean, if, as we go through this, all three parts of this, um, I think he's done his due diligence and I actually think it will explain more as he goes down. I mean, is it, you know, the little Dutch boy putting his finger in the, the hole in the dam? But it's trying to retain anyways. Cause I know ninety people could have taken that test. Fifteen of my, of them might pass the agility test. People don't realize how hard that is. I passed that once. That is no joke.
The statewide average is at least half fail.
Uh, i- if I could just add, add in real quickly, um, will this fix a problem entirely?
No.
Okay, retention, whether it's here or anywhere is, is, it's, it's a multifaceted, uh, problem. It's, it's, so I understand with what you're saying as far as, uh, trying to get, you know, some, some stats and facts to, to, to go off of. But you don't know, it's not always that easy. Uh, again, there's many different reasons. I, what we're trying to do with this is, is to control the controllables. All right. This is something that we can do in talking to the, the men and women that, that, uh, I represent that is, is a piece. It's a piece of the puzzle. It's not the whole puzzle. All right. I'm not saying it's the whole puzzle. I'm not saying we're not gonna, if we implemented this, that two weeks after implementing it, you might not lose somebody. You might. Okay? That's the real world. All right. But, but again, it is something that benefits the men and the women in the department. And you'll see when I go through the other thing, it benefits the citizens of Binghamton. Ready for the second one? So this, this, the second change in the, uh, MOA is if you go to our current CBA, there's what's, there's a section called retirement incentive. All right. Uh, the retirement incentive is if you leave in your twentieth year, prior to getting to your twenty-first year in, you get two thousand dollars at the time you leave. All right. It's an extra check for two thousand dollars. Uh, that was put in there in a time, like the chief said, when we had tons of people taking the test. Again, when I, when I took the test, four hundred and fifty people took that test. All right. Uh, so it, it was done in a, in a, in a financial, Councilman Kavanaugh, you can appreciate finances. Uh, it was done to get rid of the senior police officers that were at the highest pay grade to replace them with officers at the lowest pay grade. It was a cost-saving measure for the city of Binghamton. And it, it made sense because there was plenty to choose from and draw from. Uh, that's no longer the case, as, as we've said several times tonight. So now what we, what I propose with this MOA is we're gonna give that up. We're not gonna have the retirement incentive. So if you leave in your first year, when you hit your twentieth, you get zero instead of two thousand. However, we change, we're gonna change that section from retirement incentive to retention incentive. So you hit your twenty-first year, you get two thousand dollars. You stay an additional year, you get two thousand dollars. Every year beyond that first year, you would get two thousand dollars for staying. Now, what this does is two things. One is it increases and helps retain officers, which gives us more officers, which is what we need. The second thing is these are our experienced officers. Uh, again, with our turnover in the last few years, we are an extremely young police department. Being a young police department, there is not a lot of experience there. So the more senior officers that we can retain, the more knowledge that can be passed on to all those other officers. So that is, uh, what we're looking at with this, uh, second part of it. Um, any questions on, on the incentive portion of it?
Captain, can you just give a little context from when they, um, graduate the academy? How long does it take before a new officer would be left on his own?
We, we're talking, well, it fluctuates. Um, I actually am, uh, the field training, uh, manager too for our field training program. Uh, it fluctuates officer to officer. But essentially it's usually roughly a year. So when the chief hires new officers here in the coming weeks, we're not gonna see them for roughly a year, uh, on patrol. Uh, there's a six-month academy that they have to undergo. They get done with that. There's a, uh, very comprehensive field training program. Uh, we analyze, I give the chief a recommendation and he makes a decision off of it. Uh, based on a whole bunch of facts as to whether or not they're ready to be released on their own for solo patrol. And one officer might take a month longer than another officer. All right. We don't release them until we feel that, that they're, they're ready, they're capable. Uh, they're gonna do a good job for the citizens and they're gonna be safe. Any other questions on that before we go to the third one?
This one seems like a really a no-brainer one. We shouldn't be incentivizing people to retire.
I think they're all no-brainer ones, but I'm, I'm somewhat biased considering the fact I came up with them. Okay, so the, the, the third change, uh, is our, our current overtime rate is at time and a half pay. Uh, it's to keep the time and a half pay overtime rate for all overtime, no changes, except for when an officer is mandated to stay. When the officer doesn't wanna stay, but we don't have enough manpower and he's forced to. Uh, and for, in those situations, it goes from time and a half to double time. Uh, what that does is that gives, makes it a little bit more palatable for the officers that are being forced to do it. Uh, to give you an example of, of what happens, actually fairly frequently, I, I, I'm the captain on the afternoon shift. Uh, and we quite often have to mandate the guys from the day shift. So if you, if you work the day shift, you're going into work before your children have gotten up in the morning. If you work your regular shift, you're there when they get home from school. But when I man, mandate them, they're, they're staying until after their kids are back in bed that night. And they haven't seen their children at all the entire day. So again, it's, it's not that much more money, but it's enough to make it a little bit more palatable for them. Uh, and again, these are things that help with the retention in the sense that, uh, if I'm an officer here and I have to get mandated and I can go somewhere else where there's not a mandate, then that might cause some of those officers to leave. But if I'm getting mandated here and I'm getting double pay, it may make it again, a little bit easier to stay here when that occurs.
I don't know if this question would be to either of you or if it would be to the deputy mayor. My understanding is that the police department might be the only department within the city that mandates. Am I, am I correct on that? Just?
Uh, I believe the fire department would too. They, they are mandated by state laws to how many can be on a truck.
We've only mandated, you know, our manpower like the last three or four years, it was unheard of. And, but you couldn't do it legally. The sheriff's department's been doing it for years, especially in the jail. But this is something new to us and luckily the newer kids don't know any different. The other guys fall, what is this? You know?
Okay.
Yeah, it never was done previous, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we understood the scope of, cause we make this change here. Who else is gonna be asking for the same types of changes?
Well, again, also the reason for the mandates, it's not an arbitrary, okay, you have to stay. Uh, it's based off of, again, the contract. So in the collective bargaining agreement, we have a minimum manpower clause that's within that contract. So we have a certain number of officers that we have to have working, uh, on a shift or we go below manpower. Uh, and so that, that's the times when it, when, when it happens. And, and to give you a number, uh, I, I know uh, President Dundin and, uh, Councilman Hotchkiss, when I spoke with them, we went over these numbers a little more detail. Again, I don't wanna keep you here all night. Uh, but two thousand twenty-four, we mandated two hundred and sixteen shifts. So that, that's the, the number that, that we mandated in, in two thousand twenty-four.
So how do you anticipate that impacting the overall budget? Those hours into.
So, uh, our, our, uh, our patrolman pay grades, as you'll see in the contract, are grades one, two, three, four, five and probationary. Uh, if you were to take out the probationary one, the bottom pay scale, uh, because they're not likely to be mandated there. Again, that year that they're, they're not being used, uh, they're, they're training. So if we look at grade three, which is in the middle, and for the most part, uh, we're probably averaging less grade four and five more often are being mandated. But we'll go with that, that middle one of three. Our, our, our pay rate for grade three, uh, patrolmen, our hourly rates is thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, that makes the overtime rate at time and a half at fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Uh, with our two hundred and sixteen mandates that we had last year at eight hours each mandate at the overtime rate of fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents, that comes to ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents that we spent last year on mandated overtime. So if we change that overtime rate from the time and a half to double time, that makes the double time rate seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. If we use those exact same number of days and hours, two hundred and sixteen mandates, eight hours each one, times the seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, that would then take the, the total to one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Making the grand total difference for that, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents. So essentially, we're talking thirty-two thousand dollars all total, uh, based off of last year's numbers. And, and hopefully, as our manpower gets better, the number of mandates we have to do decreases. So that making that the, the worst case scenario would hopefully be last year. Uh, but we're only talking thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and it's not so much that, it's again, it's about making it more palatable for the officers when it hap- happens to them.
Captain, so of the proposals, this is the only one that struck me as possibly having the ability to somehow game the system a little bit or have a situation which people are not picking up possibly overtime shifts that are offered because they know and they don't. Somebody's gonna get mandated and they're gonna get double time instead of time and a half where they would have picked up an overtime, you know, possible shift. Um, now I, I had brought that up early on and I, I was given an answer, but I just like it. You know, reiterated.
We, we don't usually have people pick up those times and that's why we have to do the mandate, cause nobody wants to, to, to do them. Again, officers are, uh, because of our shortages, they're, they're really putting in a lot of hours and you don't, you don't wanna do it. I mean, again, we have grants that, as well, where officers can work and officers don't work them because they're working so much.
I was gonna say, Councilman, we have unlimited overtime. They don't want it. These kids are a different breed. With grant money for give, for community policing, there, there's almost grant money, almost unlimited. They don't take it. They don't want it. They're not scamming. I'm telling you, they don't want the overtime.
Okay.
Okay, so that is basically the sum of that one. Thank you for that, by the way. Uh, it, it, any other questions on the third one or? Or to this point, that's that's pretty much everything I had. If there's any questions on on anything else at all.
I guess, again, maybe more directed at the deputy mayor. I'd be interested in a a letter or something from the mayor's office about how these would or would not translate onto other offices that contracts that may want such changes, whether there's any concerns about that, I guess. Because we're looking at it in a zoom-in lens of one department. And then the question is, is there's a specific financial amount that goes into doing this versus if other departments or other groups are going to be requesting such changes? So I guess I, again, not a question for you, but to the mayor's office to get something in writing about that.
Madavetsky, the only thing I I can chime in on that is outside of the firefighters and the police, which have state mandates that they have to follow that are in their CBAs, the Teamsters and CSCA do not have those mandates. So it's not something that they could come back to unless it's during the contract negotiation, which CSCA has wrapped up. And I think the Teamsters have another year or two to go on the contract. But I know with talking.
This is the second time we're going, well, previous council, I believe, reopened or amended the police contracts.
They were.
And then we're looking at doing that again.
They used an MOU to renegotiate their contract instead of the whole thing. So it wasn't that it was just opened up on an MOU. That's how they renegotiated their contract. So that would be no different than like what CSCA negotiate in their full CBA.
And then I believe I've heard rumblings that family leave as an issue will be something that's coming down to council, independent of this.
I would love to see changes to the FMLA.
I just don't know how much we can change that with it being a state and federal law. So I know with some of the contracts.
There is a different state FMLA package.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, Captain, like I said to you, I love the ideas of you thinking outside the box. And oh, just so it's on the record, and Captain, you correct me if I'm wrong, they're not going to need anything added to their budget to do this. This is already going to be included in the current police budget.
Right, so the the overtime would come out of the overtime budget. There's already in the in the budget, there is the retirement incentive. That would just change to retention incentive, but it's already there.
Remember from our discussions that there's actually very few people over that.
Currently, there's eight.
There's eight, yeah, I was going to say there's eight.
Yeah.
For people who are who have not had private conversations.
Right, we're not talking an exorbitant amount of money. I don't, there's not 50 officers that could get the retention. Currently, there's a grand total of eight, and and that should be dipping down here probably shortly with other retirements. But again, hopefully someday, that could be a really big number. Because again, that's giving the experience that we need for our younger officers.
Thank you for for tackling this and acknowledging our our care and concern for retention.
Yeah, thank you.
Every every district wants more officers, pretty much. Mine certainly does.
No other questions? Well, thank you both for presenting, and have a good evening. So next on the agenda is in the planning committee. I'll turn it over to the chair of the planning committee, Councilmember Rathmill. It's RL 2536. And John Solak, would you like to come down and be the presenter, please?
Hi, John, welcome. Hi, so this is RL 25-36, a local law for the creation of a city of Binghamton Industrial Development Agency, submitted by Binghamton resident John Solak. Would you share, John, the onus for submitting this request? And what you mean specifically by, quote, "no longer serving the residents of Binghamton?"
Let's see, is this, in 1969, the state authorized the creation of IDAs. Broom County jumped on it right away in 1970, so. The legislation that authorizes these public benefit corporations are not one to a county. Any municipality can create their own IDA, just like you have a local development corporation. So and without going down the list, you know, Auburn is 26,000 people. They have an IDA, plus they're in Kuga County, Kuga County has the IDA. So a lot of different IDAs. Albany has three or four, Albany County. So the thinking on this is, how do we regain the clout and the respect that the city of Binghamton should have as the county seat? And the city of Binghamton, for people that live outside of Binghamton and people that are movers and shakers in this community, is treated like a poor, and I mean poor, stepchild. And this has happened over a period of time. When we had a mayor, and we have to go back to Crab, was a mayor that was a promoter and media savvy, had a lot of, you know, good traits, leadership traits. There that that competition between the city and the county was equalized. Unfortunately, over a period of time, we've had a lot of mayors that have acquiesced to the county and everything. And the track record of the IDA within the city of Binghamton and within the county, the IDA is a failed agency. It's an industrial development agency, ham and egg jobs, you know, whistle blows, we go to work. It's become an agency for rental property. It's become a handout to the wealthiest families in this community, billionaires. You want me to mention Dick's Sporting Goods that's leaving? That's the one, you know? So and they failed. I mean, the IM3 bankruptcy, semiconductor laser, canopy growth, EIT. These are, these are billions of dollars worth of bankruptcies that the IDA savin, that the IDA has brought in and that have failed. There's also the conflict of interest. You know, George Akel used the IDA as his personal agency to put his projects in. Hey, you want to swap the Carnegie Library for a brand-new library in my defunct shopping plaza? You want to beat the prevailing wage? We'll we'll sell it to you as a package deal. So and and there's two outstanding ones. One is the Charles Street Business Park. The IDA was supposed to do that, and it's bounced back and forth and thing. The IDA, and and they even got a gift horse out of the blue with a Fortune 500 company coming into that Charles Street Business Park, and they couldn't fill it up at all, at all. And and we know the the genesis of that. Anitek was packing up. Buchi said there was a developer that was coming in to to redevelop the Anitek site? No, no. It was a demolition company who held the title for 10 years, seeing if any claims come out of the woodwork, and then then you just hand it over to the IDA. So the library, Kevin McLaughlin said this himself. He said, I got, I want to get rid of that library. And 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 keep in mind, when this deal was put together for the library, oh, well, that that Carnegie Library, that'll go just like that, you know, law firm. That there's no problem there, 10, 20. So what did what did the IDA do? They finagled the exchange of the Carnegie Library for their own little building on the Broom Community Campus. They 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 gave the Carnegie Library to Broom to get the parcel thing. What did they do then? Well, they took the Greater Binghamton Chamber of Commerce out of Binghamton along with them, and they became the landlord to the Chamber of Commerce. And the same woman operates, she works 80 hours a week, she says, according to the tax returns, 168,000 at the IDA and 80,000 for the chamber. So it's time we got serious about economic development here. And the way we get serious, the council, just like the county, you appoint the members of the IDA. I don't think there's a specific number that you have to have. And look, the IDA is not rocket science either. They they make their money on development fees. They give away the tax base, and they they take in money. They they got, any any given time, they have five, six, seven million. There's hiring more people all the time. They just hired a comptroller. So it's about respect, it's about clout, and it's about a fair deal for the taxpayers of Binghamton. I mean, look at, look at the big 50 Front Street, right? And it's about getting, letting people live up to their commitments. Mixed use at 50 Front Street. Part of the package that says we're creating jobs because we're going to have mixed use. Well, what happened? They poached one tenant from Metro Center, and that's it. And there it stands, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight years, empty, empty. That's your mixed use. I asked the IDA, do you have rent rent rolls on these these things? Every every lender has a rent roll, right? And you send the guy, the little guy at the bank that's just beginning, you send him to knock on the door to see, see if the tenants really there, if these places are really rented. And one outstanding fraud with the guy that half-owned 50 Front Street was, they went and took boots and boot mats in front of the the apartments to make it make it look like there was tenants there. There was no tenants there. That that's, he he owned a good piece of 50 Front Street. So we're, we've got to do something, and you've got to gain control of the city. You've got to get better projects. And the way you get better projects is to have your own IDA. And again, the respect, the clout, people laugh at Binghamton. They laugh at it, don't kid yourself. And, you know, these mayors just acquiesce. We have, we have a county legislator right here, 30 years. Now, he's the only guy, if my memory serves me light, that has actually been to city council meetings. These other people get on the legislature, you ask them to do something for Binghamton? They never peep up about Binghamton. You know, they've they've acquiesced to the hinterlands. So some town supervisor somewhere with pig slop on his boots has more clout than all of you, all of you. You know, this is the way it's working around here. So people are coming into the city, CEOs of nonprofits, 150, 175,000. They're getting in their SUVs, and man, they're going to Endwell, they're going to Vestal, wherever they are. But boy, boy, when that grant money comes through, they make a sympathetic case for the poor, single mothers and the poor people of Binghamton. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the the nonsense. So this is a good deal for you. Now, even if it, and and don't overthink it, because even if it ended up in mothballs, even if you had your corporate book and you met once a year, at least you have the structure if something comes up. So this 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 doesn't, I mean, it's 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 zippity-dooda on this thing, very fast. If you can, I mean, look at the, look at the way the Binghamton Local Development Corporation functions. I mean, you know, that's not, that's not high-energy stuff over there. So put it in, throw the gauntlet down, and let's see what happens.
John, I I'm just shocked that your proposal to fix government is to start a new quasi-governmental organization. I'm shocked.
Well, isn't isn't that, isn't that funny? But that's what it's come down to in this town. That's what it's come down to. You know, I used to say this all the time, you know, they used to, when this was all Republicans here. They used to say, well, you know, we're getting this and that, and this is doing great work and everything else. And I said, well, you better be careful because you're building a a bigger and stronger entitlement community, and you can't run it, and the Democrats will come in and run it for you. So that's, yes, yes, I I'm fighting fire with fire. And it's it's some, only because, only because the, I asked a simple question one day. I said, would the city of Binghamton legislators form a caucus and put the city first? No, when the, when all those jobs went up to the Oakdale Commons that were on Front Street here, workforce development, Bob Whistler said nothing, nothing. I said, Bob, they stop, they get a tank of gas, maybe they buy a sandwich, a cup of coffee. You're taking all these jobs out of your district. Well, you know, nothing. So it's too blasé around here. And like I say, when it was Edwin Crawford and Al Libis, Juanita Crabbe and Carl Young, Tim Griffin, you had balancing personalities that that wanted to move up the ladder, maybe maybe make a career out of it. And they they got the attention, and there was always this battle. Now it's just, well, whatever Jason Garner wants, Jason gets.
So you don't, John, so you don't think the the county IDA and the agency, you don't think they work properly?
No, they don't. Because they, first of all, there's no, there there's just, it's 90% rental properties.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's it's rental properties and this ungodly amount of money, $90 million and counting to the Oakdale Commons.
Okay.
I mean, if 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 you don't think that that's not going to be flipped as soon as all the leases are in place, you know, I mean, it's, you're you're almost at, and I don't even think there's any taxes on it for like three or four years, there's nothing.
Wow, I think that's that's the aspect of.
Yeah.
What I appreciate about you raising in terms of whether or not the IDA or the agency is serving the residents of Binghamton.
Right.
The the significant millions of dollars that have been awarded in payment in lieu of tax agreements as incentives for development. I think I, we don't quite share the same concerns in terms of the engagement in rental property, because I do see that as a primary need within the city, certainly the county, but the actual management of those funds, the management of the development and how decisions are made certainly has, it's not been transparent, in my opinion. It's been, and again, I mean, I wouldn't argue at all that that they have not represented the actual needs of the community. The 2017 housing study that was commissioned by the county and performed by the agency has a very small mention, one or two sentences of anyone beneath low income when it comes to housing needs, despite that being a priority need for the city. So I appreciate where you're starting with this conversation, so.
Yeah, because the top people in this community, I mean, some of them live on South Mountain, some of them. But most of the people that do all the decisions around here don't don't live anywhere near Binghamton. So, you know, it's it's up to you, but I would I would do it. And then you can, you know, if if a developer comes in and wants to to play, they gotta, they gotta go through you. And like, like I say, it's, there's no risk. These IDA bonds that are floated, it's just the name of the bond on the IDA. The IDA doesn't stand behind it. The Binghamton Industrial Development Agency wouldn't stand behind it. But you got all that empty industrial property, and sometime, maybe, maybe. Oh, and and by the way, as long as, I just want to say one thing about labor, because they've got a.
I I was going to chime in about 200 Court Street, and I was gonna, can I, can I do this one, John? So 200 Court Street, last year, the developer changed the permit with the city from a local union contractor to an out-of-town contractor. Then they went with the original permit to the IDA and got a local labor waiver saying, well, we met this requirement, the rest of it can get waived, and then turned around, but the permit wasn't valid. So literally, the unions put a rat up in front of the IDA last year. And 200 Court Street, if it wasn't for Kelvin Horella from the IBW 325, I would not even have known to look into that. And so what did the IDA do? They decided to put together a committee that was going to look over labor issues with the exact same members that sit on the IDA. They did not bring in anybody outside that would have any experience to look at it. And there was years ago, Kevin McLaughlin had an article, it used to be on the IDA's website, that the IDA hates using public works or prevailing wage for any of their projects because it supposedly rises taxes. Well, prevailing wage is the wages set by the unions, which is the standard area living wages. But the IDA had it on their website for years until I called it out, and then they took it down, that they don't like using that. So they'd rather pay out-of-town workers substandard wages. And every IDA I've seen across the state as a previous union rep and organizer, they're all terrible. And this is the one thing I think me and John will probably agree on more than anything else in all the years we've known each other. And John, I'm going to be following up with you on this one.
Okay.
Yeah, really good. Thank you so much, John.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You got a, that guy was very cool. Olami, Olami was the coolest guy, you know, I really, my my brief interactions with him were very positive. I I'm going to miss it.
Thank you, thank you, John.
Thank you so much, Sean. So next on the agenda.
Mr. President, I, before we start the finance show here for the next half hour, I I'd like to motion to possibly move RL 2541 up to the next thing. So it's just the the one planning one, and then Dylan can go home.
Okay.
Sure.
But it's all going to be finance, though.
Well, so I have a motion from Councilmember Kavanaugh to move RL 25-41 up the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All right, can we do a quick roll call, Madam Clerk, just to cover our our bases?
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmill.
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss is absent, Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is 600.
So the next thing on the agenda will be in the planning committee with Councilmember Rathmill as the chair. Dylan Pelton, the historic planner, will be presenting, and this is RL 25-41.
Thank you, this is a resolution to nominate 607.
This is a resolution to nominate 607 Shenango Street to be included in the building landmark registry. Dylan, could you give us an overview, please?
So the land that the building was sitting on was purchased by Walter Whitlock's mother in 1904. He built the house in 1907. He meticulously planned out this house, how I know is the current owner. Jeff Rashlin came to me with a stack of about 120 signed architectural drawings by Whitlock himself. And the building is kind of a French colonial masonry. It's got a bunch of different windows. He obviously designed it meticulously. Every window trim, bookcase has a drawing. Uh, he himself contributed to the county courthouse, the Masonic temple, Binghamton General Hospital, he did Cavalry Church, he did Lutheran Church, the Redeemer, as well as other various buildings around Binghamton. And it's rare that you get a building that was both designed and lived in by an architect that has a bunch of drawings, like catalog is huge.
Just curious, so those drawings are in his, the building on his possession? Has he offered to let them be scanned or anything at the library? Do we know or?
He said he was open to the idea. He, he literally, somebody came to his doorstep and said, I think these are yours.
Wow.
And then he came to me and he asked if it could be a landmark structure.
And I, I take it you and the department are certainly behind this?
Yeah, it's been through the Cod Commission, it's been open meeting, whole thing. Nobody's against it whatsoever, yeah.
I don't have any additional questions, this was
I kinda wanna tour.
Interesting, right, this was interesting to me to read.
It really, it's, it's unique structure because his draft studio is above his garage.
Wow.
So a lot of the work he did was actually in this building. And the garage itself, the ceiling is a truss and cement. Like, I've never seen a garage design like that before. It was really weird. The whole, but yes, you should ask Jeff, he'll give you a tour.
Very cool, thank you.
Nobody else had any other questions?
Do we have contact info to set that up?
I'm assuming we could ask Dylan.
Can we follow up with you?
Yeah, if you want. He's a Realtor, he'd be thrilled.
Well, hearing no other questions, thank you for coming down and presenting, Dylan. Hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is in the Finance Committee, Councilmember Kavanaugh as chair. Megan Hyman will be filling in to, uh, present for RL 25-37. Welcome back, Megan.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one question. Uh, so this is RL, uh, 2537, ordering to amend the 2025 adopted fee schedule, update the Water Street parking garage. Did we go back and check the minutes to see if we actually did this? Because I thought we harmonized them all. I mean, it's easy enough just to do this, but I thought we actually harmonized them all.
I would have to double check my notes from the budget meeting. We were talking about that too with finance, um, because I think this was just an oversight that it wasn't updated and I couldn't recall if we waited because the garage wasn't open yet or
I almost think it's just a printing error. I, I, I really think we harmonized all of them, but I mean, I'm happy to have it go through. All this is doing is harmonizing the monthly, uh, rate for each of the garages. So one was left off of the printed version of the fee schedule that got put into the budget. But I think we actually did it. So if we go back to the minutes and we see that it's actually there, I'm saying it's just a printing error and we should just be able to fix it. Otherwise we'll put through the RL?
Sure, yeah, what, whatever you think is easier, we were trying to figure that out too. But like you said, this is just, uh, we raised the rates to 105 for the other garages. Uh, Water Street was the only one that remained at 95, uh, so this would just, uh, bring it up to the, the same rate as the others. I've, I've made a note, I'll check on it first thing in the morning.
Okay. Um, I, I think we can figure it out by tomorrow, one way or the other. So I'll motion expedite.
Okay.
Have an emotion in a second, any discussion on the expedition? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss is absent, Councilmember Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Next on the agenda is still in the Finance Committee with Councilmember Kavanaugh and Terry Hussey, the assessor, is gonna be the presenter and this is RL 25-40.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we have some role corrections.
Yes, and this is, um, typical yearly after, you know, we try our best, um, but sometimes seems we do hundreds of re-leveys, um, for the county and city tax bills. And once in a while there has to be a correction of errors due to clerical issues when we're doing it. Um, and we only, we had four of them this year and, um, North Floral, 302 Front Street, 36 Winding Way and 15 Birch. North Floral is owned by the county and we found through the MUNA system that that re-levy shouldn't have been applied, um, to it. 302 Front Street was again, uh, issued to where, um, the address was 304.5 and it, it came up 304, which related to a tax net number that I went by. Um, you know, the re-levy was applied to the wrong parcel because of it. Um, 36 Winding Way is owned by the city of Binghamton and since I don't get the owner's name on my list and things, it was just an oversight, um, on, we don't re-levy against the city on their own city properties. 15 Birch Street, when we do the 520 chargebacks, we use non-homestead tax rates for non-homestead parcels, homestead tax rates for homestead parcels. This happened to be a homestead, but accidentally clerical error, the non-homestead tax rate was applied and it was adjusted. He still paid his re-levy, um, but at the homestead rate. So this is typical, the county of Broom approved all these corrections of errors. They all were submitted to Broom County first because they're the ones that handle it and it's, you know, it's part of the admitted tax process from year to year. So it did not over impact anything, it's just making corrections.
Who caught these, taxpayers or your office or county or? Who caught the errors?
Well, um, a couple, the, um, city of Binghamton and the county Broom was caught with the treasurer's office because they're the ones that gave me the list. The 15 Birch, the homeowner, he's an accountant, called me, which I was thankful for. Um, and moving forward, now we separate the non-homestead and homestead groups. So we won't have that. It's a very complicated equation because you're doing days and everything. So we want to make sure we're as accurate as possible. So, um, this is very minimal compared to what some other municipalities have gone through in the past and things. So, um, we want to be as accurate as possible. We address things that come up. It's just like a exemption being missed on a property and they're entitled to the exemption. We do a correction of merit. This is normal practice when we're dealing with tax bills and warrants.
How frequently do, um, properties get category, category shifted between homestead and non-homestead? And how much is like, is that, does that change when a property sells or if it's being used differently or?
Homestead is the one, two, three family categories, it's a, um,
It's set out in the real property tax law what's considered homestead or not.
Non-homestead is commercial basically. And, um, so, uh, any four apartments or above is non-homestead, commercial properties typically. Um, so, um, that's in our tax rates. As you did the budget, you know, that there's a difference in, proportionate in the tax rates for non-homestead versus homestead.
Did you need this expedited or it doesn't matter?
Excuse?
Do you need this expedited or does it not matter?
No, this is just, um, a procedure that, uh, wants to, if it's approved, then, you know, the, the vote and approval, we want to send it to Broom County just so we're agreeing with them. Plus the county needed the resolution for the one county property, North Floral, um, to show that we agreed that that charge was not supposed to be applied to that, their property on that situation. It would happen, it shouldn't have been a rollover. Um, and that's something within the MUNA system, um.
Anybody else have any other questions? Hearing none, thank you so much, Terry.
Thank you.
Hope you have a wonderful evening.
Oh, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda stays in the Finance Committee with Councilmember Kavanaugh as the chair and Jeff Krueger, Superintendent of Water and Sewer. Please come on down and this is RL 25-38. How you doing, Jeff?
Good evening, it's really great to see me again.
Yeah, I got feelings of deja vu over here. More electricity? What are you people doing over there? You not turn the lights off at night?
Did Megan send out a note that we've adjusted that 45 request?
Uh, yeah, I got in, she did send out an email that said 1,500.
Yeah, we're asking for 1,500 instead of 45,000. So it's a little, little bit different. Um, Mr. Robinson saw a bill, then looked at the budget and saw a hole and then quickly filled out a, a request and then he backtracked earlier today when we were talking about it, realized he already made this request, uh, at the last council meeting.
Ah, all right.
So to cover any last minute expenses, he's changed the request to 1,500. He believes that'll be more than enough to cover any last minute, uh, adjustments to the electric bill for the sewer.
All right, so we can just withdraw this RL then? Because it's wrong and it's, and the amount transferred will be under 10,000.
He said he's already done that part of it, so any transfer in this line has to go through council.
Oh, because we've already, uh, the aggregate, right? It's based on 2024, all right, right. Okay, so we just need a different number by Wednesday. You're just gonna change it to 1,500.
Right, so the deputy mayor did clarify in an email, I want to say around four-ish, that, uh, changed the amount. Um, as long as that is the final amount, I think we should be okay to draft.
Any other questions?
Well, Jeff is requesting expedition on this, so could I entertain a motion for expedition? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Hearing a, uh, motion in a second, any discussion on the expedition? Hearing none, can, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna read off what it says here. It says to assist in year-end closing pending bills.
Madam, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Rathmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss is absent, Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
Thank you, Jeff. Actually, I think you're staying put. Yep, so next thing on the agenda is still in the Finance Committee with Councilmember Kavanaugh as the chair and Jeff Krueger presenting.
Now, Jeff, it's February, you're already messing with our budget? What is going on?
This is a long sad tale about a service truck that we thought was going to be repaired. Uh, it began almost a year ago, spring of '24. Uh, it spent a month here, then a month there, then those mechanics didn't like it. So they sent it somewhere else and those mechanics talked to someone who knew a lot about that car and then they were gonna fix it and then it went to another place and they were gonna fix it. And no one can fix whatever may or may not be wrong with this service truck, except it doesn't run for more than two or three minutes at a time. Um, it's done. We have expended far too much money and far too much time trying to save this vehicle that even Ford has rejected. Uh, the dealerships won't touch it, none of the service stations will touch it. Um, I have an uncle down in the city who might want to work on it, but I don't think that's a legitimate path. Um, it, it's just, there's nothing we can do with this truck.
So what is this, what is a water distribution service truck? Is it a pickup truck?
It's a larger body truck with shelving units and tool racks and things like that. So it's a utility vehicle that we use constantly on water main breaks to bring large amounts of equipment to the job sites. So it's a vital truck that we have.
How many of them do we have?
We have two. The other one is limited at about 25 miles an hour. It's still running, so we like it.
Jeff, just knowing that these trucks, sometimes you have to special order, how long do you think the turnaround will be to actually get it?
We have one that's ready to be converted, another one that can take the existing body off of the bad truck and put that on. So we have two quotes already. Um, this is gonna have to go through the car vending, I don't know if it's one of those crime machines with the big towers you see on the commercials, but we have to go through that whole bid process. Um, but we know of at least two that are immediately available. So anything else that comes up and price wise, whatever happens, happens at that point. Um, that's why I'm pushing, I want to, in case it does become a much longer issue. Um, yeah.
So how do we decide to raid these particular lines and what are we, what are we endangering later in the year?
I went through these lines and either they had little to no action last year. So these are lines that are standby lines for something that may or may not occur, something that we may need next year, we may need in two years. Um, a lot of these lines, we put in a little bit every year to keep them going so that when something larger comes up, we can have something rebuilt. Uh, equipment rehab are, um, the tapping machine. Uh, when we get the tapping machine rebuilt, it's about $15,000. The bits the tapping machine use are seven or eight thousand to have them retooled. Um, that's one of the larger pieces of equipment we send to have repaired. Um, but we see numbers like that every couple of years to have something done. Every, between every, somewhere in between three and five years, we'll see these machines needing to go out for repair. That's where that one comes from. The hydrant line, I've been battling with this one for years. Um, we're not Kmart to every contractor in the city. When we have a large amount of hydrants in our yard, they come to us first. They bring them back in a few months, but then they, they're just using our inventory and it's a game that I've been trying to get away from for years. We have an inventory so that we cover emergency situations at 3:00 AM, not so that we can make the contractors' lives easier and they can go ahead and schedule work far sooner than if they had to order it themselves. So I'm cutting, I keep cutting the budget, keep cutting the amount of hydrants done. We only replace between eight and 12 in a good, a 12 would be a really great year for my crews.
Just curious, what, what does fire hydrant cost?
About four grand. So.
Okay.
Building repair, we've been fortunate, nothing bad has fallen apart. Exactly. And filter plant is residual from another truck that was purchased, I believe, last, the beginning of last year.
All right. Now, not having seen the truck that's going to be, is out of commission, is it, is it the best long-term solution to repurpose that, that bed and the toolboxes and whatever? Are they in good enough condition? Are we gonna be in a situation where we just put a piece of crap on a new chassis?
Yes, that's what it becomes. We're putting something that is serviceable, but not in its best shape. It's something that has seen time on the road, a lot of vehicles, not that old, I think it's eight, nine years old. Um, just the engine's gone, uh, and no one can touch it, no one can repair it. So it's not a brand new piece of equipment by removing the toolbox off and putting it on another body. But it would put us, it would get us up and running on something that we didn't have to special order. When we get into special order, it'll jack the price up for another fifty thousand dollars. We can have the old box transferred for about four grand right in uh, over here, Hampton Truck Body. So.
So then the majority of this cost is just the actual, whatever, F-two-fifty or whatever you're, you're buying, okay? Jeff, is this something you want expedited?
No, we have time. I still have to put it out to bid, I have to spec it out, put it out to bid. We're doing that in next week or so, so we still have three, four weeks.
Okay, I only ask because you used the old RL sheet and it didn't have a checkmark. Anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none, thank you so much, Jeff, for coming down to present and hope you have a wonderful evening.
You guys too, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, still in the finance committee with council member Kavanaugh and Megan Hyman coming down to be our presenter on RL twenty-five dash forty-two.
Do you want me to give the overview on this?
Yes, please. What happened?
Okay, um, so this is twenty-five forty-two, right? This is, um, this essentially allows us to pay an invoice for um, repairs to one of the gates that was damaged at the State Street parking ramp. Um, we are increasing both the uh, revenue line and the insurance recovery fund and an expense line, um, because we have the um, insurance information from the individual who uh, had the accident uh, that caused the damage. Um, so Laz will seek reimbursement uh, through their insurance.
Is this the accident that happened just after Christmas?
Um, I don't know the timeline on it. This is the uh, it was the gate that is the exit for monthly parkers. So it's currently still closed. Those monthly parkers are going through the uh, through another exit.
Different situation. Okay. So we haven't actually gotten the recovery yet?
We have not.
Right.
To my knowledge, we have not, but we have the insurance information from the uh, from the person involved.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Which also stays in finance with council member Kavanaugh, deputy mayor Megan Hyman presenting on RL twenty-five dash forty-four. So twenty-five forty-four and twenty-five forty-five are linked. Um, one's the authorization to uh, uh, enter into the uh, performance contract for all the energy upgrades. And the other one is the uh, the lease agreement to facilitate payment. Um, so we talked about this late last year and it got kind of kicked back upstairs and here we are again.
Yep, so Siemens, the Siemens representatives were here, I think in December, presenting to city council uh, on the energy performance contract and some, some of the work that they've done as part of that. Um, as you said, councilman, the, the two pieces of legislation here are now authorizing the mayor to enter into that performance contract with Siemens and the lease agreement that outlines how the city will finance the uh, the improvements over, over twenty years. Um, but basically, just to summarize what Siemens said when they were here, uh, they've been working for the last several months now uh, with city departments to um, identify projects to make the city more energy efficient, um, reduce carbon emissions and realize some cost savings uh, along the way. So these contracts are now ready for council approval.
So Megan, I have a few questions on, it's gonna be kind of a mixture of both the lease agreement and then the, the full agreement.
Okay.
I know uh, in doing the total math between the lease agreement and then all the work completed with the performance assurance program, the whole I guess the whole amount is four million forty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. And seeing that um, it looks like the first payment that would be the beginning of twenty-twenty-six is a hundred, the lease payment is a hundred percent covering the interest and there's nothing going to the principal, is that common practice in these kind of contracts?
Um, I know the lease contract is something that uh, our attorneys worked out with the Siemens attorneys. But yeah, the gist is that the city would not be making a payment on this until uh, I believe February of next year. Um, so that would give us some time to uh, realize the cost savings from some of the improvements that are being done. Um, but in terms of the principal versus interest split, uh, I, I can't speak to that.
So in going through the full agreement, I was looking at the different um, kilowatts per hour that were used. And according to the baseline data in article five of the full agreement, the Robinson Street underpass is listed as getting a LED lighting upgrade. But according to the baseline data, the Robinson Street underpass uses twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-six kilowatts. Yet the Conklin Ave Fire Station uses thirty thousand three hundred and eighty-four kilowatts, which is only nine thousand and fifty-eight kilowatts more. But according to the data, the fire station on table five point two point one has eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours a year of occupancy. How is a fire station that's fully occupied for a year only using nine thousand kilowatts more than an underpass?
I wish that was a question that I could confidently answer. I can, I can kick it to Siemens and they could get back to you tomorrow, I'm sure.
Well, that, that was kind of where I was gonna get at with some of this, because even like, there's no data on consumption of electricity for Sherlinsy Park, Marabato Stadium, or Ross Park Zoo. Yeah, all three will be receiving thirteen EV chargers or twenty-three EV chargers, which is more than half of the EV chargers that are gonna either be added or existing. So in getting a contract of this size for us to be able to get answers and do our fiduciary responsibility, there's no way we're gonna be able to vote on this by Wednesday. I know it needs to be expedited. I was talking to corp counsel a little bit about how far we could push it out because I know we're kind of locked into an amount to pay Siemens at a deadline.
Right.
But I mean, for a contract this big to go through it, I mean, and getting it Friday, there was nobody we could call over the weekend.
Yeah, so I think some of that uh, Siemens, in terms of the like, the processes that they use to, to determine the cost savings and the energy savings. I think that was um, part of the hope of having them uh, in, in December, kind of giving the overview on, on that whole process and what, on how they worked alongside city department heads. Um, however you'd like to go about it. If you have specific questions after your view that you'd like to send that we can pass on to Siemens. I think that council has the contact for the Siemens reps that were here, but I can pass that on too, if you'd like to connect directly. Whatever your preference on that is to get your questions answered.
Yeah, I, I would rather have the contact information, just so stuff doesn't get lost in translation. Because I probably have ten other questions here that I, I, I know you're not gonna be able to answer and I, I don't want to just keep, you know, throwing fireballs at you on the floor. But yeah, with getting this late Friday, and I, I know there was a lot of parts moving and getting negotiated. I've been picking corp councils my uh, brain over here. But yeah, to get all the way through this and you know, I spent a couple hours on it today. And like I said, to see that there was no data for consumption of electricity for the stadium, that seemed kind of off to me.
Sure, I will share that with you tonight.
Corp counsel, do you know off the top of your head what's the deadline for this? Is it this week or is it a, you know, the thirteenth or?
I'm working on finding the exact closing date that they were shooting for. Um.
I know Siemens has been pushing us to get it done as soon as possible for two reasons really. I think one, um, when they were here in December, they had mentioned sort of like the uncertainty around the administration change at the federal level and what incentives might be still available and uh, what might go away. And I think they're still concerned about that, as, as are we. Um, and uh, just the ability to uh, start the, the projects and the work would allow them to start, would allow us to start seeing the cost savings sooner. So they've, they've been pushing us to, to get the contract in so that we can start the work.
So they're pushing for closing for mid-next week.
Okay. Okay.
So I think we would be able to do, we got a special meeting.
So we had concerns in December. And I will speak up for councilman, ex-councilman Costi, who, who had, I think, some salient points about electric vehicle chargers. And we still see all the electric vehicle chargers in here and there was never any discussion on those points. Um, I had questions about the estimation of, of hours and usage at the parks and, and even the, again, it was okay, we'll take this back up and we'll, we'll discuss it. And then it just comes back down. Well, yeah, and I want to add into that. So in this contract, there's actually gonna be four EV chargers at Sherlinsy, four EV chargers at First Ward. But then there's only gonna be um, what is it, six at Ross Park, which First Ward and Sherlinsy Park does not get the traffic that Ross Park does. And then do we have the cost for bringing that extra, so we, it's incumbent upon us to pay NICE to bring electricity to those chargers, right? Though that, that instructor's not there, not being covered in this. No, we have to pay NICE fourteen thousand dollars for the EV chargers for the electrical hookup. That was just one little thing. I don't think that was for all the electrical chargers, I don't think. That's how it was, that's how it's broke down in here. Yeah, it's fourteen thousand directly to NICE. Yeah, but I don't think that covers all the chargers in all the parks. That's what it says in that section of the contract. That's why I said it's to, to go all the way through this thing.
But I think there are also incentives out there that Siemens is saying would offset, certainly for the EV chargers, there are. Um, and, and I apologize, I, when Siemens was here in December, I thought they left contact information and I assumed that you guys would be in touch if you had questions. But I, I'll pass that along again if you.
Uh, the message that got relayed, as far as I know, was that we're, we're gonna, we're taking this back and we're we'll come back. And it was not, and then just the agreement just appeared. But we, I, I don't think council had any indication of the degree of what was going on that was gonna come down for a vote last week. So.
I know uh, councilman Hotchkiss is not here tonight and he's in charge of public works and parks. But um, conceivably, we could have a meeting between now and a special business meeting. Um, to go more line by line.
And the more I've gone through it, the more I, I um, I had, I had a discussion with, with the city engineer to some degree uh, over how these have worked out and his, seeing them in, in uh, practice in other municipalities, which, which, which allayed some of my concerns. But I, I, I still have concerns that some of this equipment that we're paying for over twenty years has a useful life of far less than twenty years. I mean, how many light fixtures and light bulbs do we have that are twenty years old?
So.
You know, and I, again, and I asked, and I didn't get a good answer. I asked this back in December. I cannot believe that our brand-new fire station needs more weather stripping and needs its, its roof ventilation fans taken off and rejiggered by Siemens. Like, I cannot believe that that's needs to be done.
Yes.
Either they weren't done properly in the first case or something, I.
I, I'll connect you with Siemens like, again on that, just so that, that they can answer about.
If there was any indication to us that this was coming down this week, we would have been working on it, but there wasn't, it just appeared.
I think at the, at the last work session when you guys approved the NYSERDA grant, um, that's tied to this, so.
Not, no, no, no. This is related to it, but it's not tied to it. That's something that the planning department was working on independently of this. The money is not specifically tied to this.
Yes, but uh, a, well, a council member asked at that time, is this related to the energy performance contract?
Yes, I asked that. And then the answer was, no, that was related to Dr. Burling, if I recall.
No, I believe I said yes and that you, you'd be seeing it soon.
And I did hear it.
Yeah, but, but.
Regardless, I'm happy to connect you with Siemens. I understand you have questions on it. But the one thing I wanted to point out was that um, the climate action plan that council passed at the end of last year, uh, the consultant on that, um, uh, CNS uh, also went over this to just some of your, your questions and points on talking to the city engineer about some of the different measurements. Um, so that was uh, the city had asked them to do sort of like a third-party uh, outside review on Siemens' numbers and measurements and uh.
Is there a report? Can we get a copy of that?
I don't know that there's a report, but they reviewed it for us as part of the climate action plan, of the climate action plan work.
I believe there is a report floating around somewhere.
From CNS? We can, we can ask them.
Okay. And just because I had it underlined here, article four of the guaranteed term responsibilities of Siemens. Incentive and grant funds will be applied for the work order through available programs such as NYSERDA, NICEG and other organizations. However, these funds are not guaranteed to be available or based on the client's cooperation. So, I mean, it'd be great if we get them, but who knows what's gonna happen with any funding or grants coming from them at this particular political climate. So I think, yeah, it's something that we need to have some questions answered from Siemens. And then if anything, we'll have to call a special business meeting towards the end of next week to make sure we're still following the deadline.
I encourage you to have a committee meeting.
I, I, we can change the date on a piece of paper. I don't think a week or two is gonna make a difference if it.
Bob? The, the issue with the timing piece is that the pricing that we have from Siemens expires. And that's, that's, that's the timeframe.
I haven't heard a word about this in two months.
That's not fair.
And the thirteenth is that expiration date?
So Siemens wants to close on the nineteenth. I don't know how close we can get to that date with them still being comfortable. Um, certainly they would want to answer your questions the best that they can. Um, so we can reach out to Siemens and see how comfortable they are with getting closer to that closing date. Um, I think Friday would be pretty comfortable. I don't know about pushing it into next week.
Well, we're doing business with them. I mean, I, I, that's like kind of business one-on-one. They want our business. Like, we have to do our due diligence like, on our part first. Like, even though it's a pricing, they essentially want our business. So like, you know, I know that's the pricing, but you know, it's essentially, it's, that's like business one-on-one. If you want, you want something from us, then you have to provide kind of what we.
And our contact info is all on the website.
Yeah.
Heard back about the questions.
Did you reach out to Siemens?
Asked questions during the meeting, requesting responses, and they did not respond.
Yeah, I think this is like, I, this is um, from our last meeting, we haven't heard anything about it. So we thought maybe it was like a dead issue. And then now it was brought up on Friday. So that's kind of where, like, you know, we're, we're at with that, so.
Yeah, I know for me personally, to make a decision on a, two contracts totaling over four million dollars without being able to do my fiduciary responsibility, I don't feel comfortable with.
No, not at all.
So Megan, I will follow up with you tomorrow to get the contact information and I'll make sure council has it all. And um, as we know, we ask questions and get answers, we'll make sure that let you and the mayor and corp counsel know.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Tonight, yep.
Okay, so anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss? Well, if we, if uh, CNS generated a report that reviewed the proposal, I would like to see that. Corp counsel, you think you could get us the proposal on that?
I I will double-check, but I'm pretty sure I saw one floating around when we first looked at the contract, so we'll, we'll find it.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?